Big junkie, I'm like, you know, like, if I could have three TVs with three different networks all side by side. And normally, like, tonight I would not mention that the person at Paul's drive- Proctin is gonna be interesting, because they ran a Kate Burden candidate in every single office.
They had signs everywhere.
It was a real conversation. And the big ones wanted it to happen, so this isn't one lie, apologize, he called him back, I said, listen, Timmy, the first one, well, I just wanted to get some information and tell him.
Good.
Talk about them.
Seven oh one.
Yeah.
I appreciate you doing it with them.
Yeah, it's not what I want to do.
Excuse me, the time is now seven oh two. I'll now call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. Tonight, we do have some condolences from our Veterans Agent. Please join me in recognizing Mr. Vincent Renzi, U.S. Navy, who passed away on October 17th. Please join me in a moment of silence for Mr. Renzi and all of our Bridgewater veterans Thank you. Okay, item A, we have approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do I have a motion for approval of meeting minutes and a second? This is from October 21st, 2025, sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the meeting minutes from October 21st? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Okay, we are now on to item B, announcements from the President. So, most importantly, there is a vacancy for the school committee. The town council and the Bridgewater School Committee members will be appointing a new member to the committee to serve until the annual town election, which I believe is April 25th, 2026. And these are the requirements from our town clerk, Ms. Larson. We are asking for a letter of intent and a resume, a brief statement of qualifications and motivation to serve, confirmation of Bridgewater residency and voter registration, and please submit all applications to the town clerk by midnight on November 10th, which would be a week from yesterday. That would be townclerk@bridgewaterMA.org. We do have a joint meeting planned for Tuesday, November 18th, right here in the council chambers. That is a regularly scheduled council meeting, to which we're inviting our school committee members to participate in that. There will be a brief public comment period regarding the vacancy. There will be candidate interviews, about five to seven minutes for each candidate, a joint deliberation between our two groups, and then we'll follow the Roberts Rules procedure to appoint an individual to the school committee. So I encourage anybody interested to submit their application and to step forward to serve our community. We've heard a lot of support for our schools this year, and as we always do, and this is a great opportunity to step forward and to go ahead and serve our children and serve our community as best as we can. As of now, our town clerk said that we only have one applicant. It's only been a week, but we only have a week left, so if you're interested, please go ahead and put your name forward, and we'd love to interview a number of folks who are interested, and hopefully get the right person on that board. I've got a couple more things, and then we'll move on with our meeting. Next, I wanted to address something that's been brought to my attention from a number of residents, and recently from the press regarding a cancellation of a town council meeting from a few weeks ago, and I feel it's important to share the facts directly with the community so they hear it from us. On September 15th, Vice President McGrath and I recorded a podcast where we spoke candidly and at length about some of the difficult issues facing our schools in our town. Following that episode, we received a message from a committee member, a school committee member. The message included images from a book titled Lights Out by Novessa Allen. It's a sexually violent book depicting scenes of stalking, home invasion, and murder. And given the nature of the communication, out of an abundance of caution, it was immediately reported to law enforcement, and I made the decision to cancel the following town council meeting. While the individual reached out earlier today to clarify that the message was not intended as a threat, the timing and nature of the communication caused concern, and we just wanted to address it. It's unfortunate that I need to make this address, and it's even necessary. It's deeply troubling when the conduct within positions of public trust falls short of the example those roles are meant to set. Despite the intent, the community expects and deserves a higher standard from our elected officials. When those standards are compromised, it weakens confidence not just in individuals, but in the institutions that we rely on. This moment should remind us that leadership is about setting the right example. I believe that Bridgewater deserves examples that uplift and not degrade public trust. And as we approach will be another challenging budget cycle, I remain committed to leading with transparency, civility, professionalism, and a willingness to have difficult yet productive conversations. And moving on from that, speaking of budgets and our schools, we do have the ability to contribute to the Chapter 70 Local Contribution Study. There's a number of public listening sessions that, a few of them have already occurred. The one that's most local to us is in Lakeville at the, I may be mispronouncing this, but Appenecat Regional High School. That's from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. So anybody that's willing to speak at public listening sessions, I'd encourage you to go ahead and do so.
Date?
On the 19th.
November 19th.
Thank you.
You can do so in person, similar to council meetings, up to three minutes. You could also write written testimony, and you could submit that online. I'll try to get a link of this posted, so anybody who's interested can go ahead and contribute. We really need all the advocacy that we can for our schools. And last announcement from me, and then we'll move on to our meeting, is Veterans Day, of course, is a week from today, November 11th. There will be the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade leaving West Bridgewater, I believe that starts at 10:00 a.m. I will be there. Mr. Gregory Martin invited me to speak on the behalf of the council, and inviting my counselors who want to participate and march. I'll be there on Tuesday morning, so I hope to see some of you guys there, and members of the public as well. That's all from me, so we'll now move on to proclamations to which we have none. And now, we have citizens open forum. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and please keep language and comments appropriate.
Hello, my name is Jeanne De Batista. I know most of you, and I want to thank you all for your service and willingness-
Sorry, Ms. De Batista, can you use, state your address, too, please?
Oh, sorry, 260 Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater, Mass. I want to thank all the town councils and the town personnel for their service and for listening to our concerns. It's very obvious that, having listened to many town meetings at this point, that our town has serious issues relating to critical infrastructure and critical town services. Our schools are overcrowded, we have problems with road infrastructure, we have first responders who need more personnel, and most importantly, we need to get a handle on the critical problems we have with inadequate water quantity and quality issues. During a recent presentation to town, DPW personnel indicated that our water situation wasn't that bad, and now that we have Wells 5R and 9R online, and said that recent shortages during the summer were primarily due to town residents wanting to water their lawns and fill their pools. Yet here we are, in the late fall, and town residents are still reporting very significant problems with both water quality and quantity. In fact, the issue has grown so serious and frustrating for town residents that a new special Facebook group has formed, called Bridgewater Unfiltered Citizens for Clean Municipal Water. It formed on October 31st, 2025, and already has 356 members, which some of you are part of, and its goal is to hold local authorities accountable, demand rigorous water quality standards, and ensure that every resident has access to the water that meets or exceeds public health guidelines. Also recently, as part of a proposed project analysis written on September 15th, 2025, our own town engineer indicated the following, and I've given you all of his comments in the packets that I distributed. Bridgewater simply cannot safely supply water to meet the current demands during contingency conditions without reducing water pressures in our distribution network to unsafe levels. Our water towers are now experiencing critically low water levels during times of the years, which historically they have kept at safer levels. He goes on to say, "The brown water we commonly experience is not just a water quality issue, it is a symptom of a bigger problem, water quantity. When our wells pump continuously, they draw water from deeper levels in the aquifier, where the water quality deteriorates, resulting in brown water. If that isn't bad enough, the safe water levels still can't be maintained in our towers. We are forced to activate Well 10B," which I think we're all very familiar with. So, the question, and he went on to say, "The DPW cannot support projects with high water supply demand because it's a public safety issue." So I have to ask, which one is it? Are we fine? Existing evidence doesn't appear to support that premise. Do we have the money, lots of monies, to spend fixing our existing issues without further burdening the taxpayers in Bridgewater? Will the tax revenue we get from the above projects outweigh what they'll cost us in terms of our current and future critical infrastructure and services? Should an analysis be done on each and every project, which shows whether the long-term cost of the town in terms of infrastructure and critical services outweigh the benefits of the proposed project? Should we raise the commercial tax rate to a level that matches the nearby towns? I think we need to know the answers to these questions before we build even more. Thank you. I'm sorry, I know I was gonna go over by about 10 seconds, but I couldn't help it.
Thank you.
I tried to make it shorter.
Thank you.
James Walsh, 60 Crescent Street. Kind of on the same theme, I know a lot of discussion in both committee and kind of in general has been about the MBTA community zoning, and I know there's a lot of questions about that, and I'm not really here to talk about that, except that I want to say I support the Planning Board's letter. I did want to mention, though, or reflect on, a few sessions ago, I think it was about a month ago, Mr. Davis, who was one of the consultants who helped, who the town paid to help prepare that zoning analysis, asserted that the Planning Board has the ability to deny projects based on water supply constraints, and I think we all breathe a sigh of relief at that. However, after reviewing our various codes and ordinances, I found that these remarks were a little bit misleading, because although we have the legal authority to implement water supply availability as a condition of project approval, we actually haven't done so for most new types of development. Currently, there's only one way to block development based on water supply, and that's in the admin code. The admin code permits the, or grants the DPW with the authority to approve or deny all new connections to the water supply. And we've been very, very lucky, you know, Mr. Ettenero has been a wonderful steward of our water supply and has hit the brakes on several new subdivisions, but it's really not what that code was intended for, and it's not a permanent, long-term fail-safe for us to rely on discretionary authority. I would suggest, you know, that we do two things. One is that we codify this discretionary practice to make sure that the good judgment that our DPW has so far exhibited is permanent and is part of our process. The water impact studies are fantastic, but they really don't have teeth. You know, what do we do once we have that information? So we need to have some sort of a mechanism that can deny an application when the water impact study shows unsustainable use. And then, second, I think we need to extend this beyond just water connections, but to all different types of reviews. So buy right development, special permits, subdivisions, the whole gamut. If that's being reviewed by the Planning Board, this should be part of the process that we consider. And why do I think this is important? You know, I think besides what folks have said over the months, we really need to stop the constant bleed, I think, of water on our, of our water supply, and give ourselves some time to catch up with our existing demand and start to prepare for our continued growth. Our water system master plan from last year noted that even just existing developments between now and 2027 will exceed the maximum water we are permitted to pull from the ground. And I know we floated a total moratorium, which is, you know, not really feasible for many different reasons, but if we have approval conditions that are set on water, we actually might kind of have some smart growth, where we're incentivizing the types of growth that have low water demand. So if it's listed in the law and you're a developer, you can look at that, you know, that law and that process and say, hey, I'm not gonna go for this huge, heavy burden of going for, you know, high water use, you know, residential, but maybe there's some commercial development that's more on brand. Apologies for going over. I did email more details of specifically what I think we could do to legislate that, but thank you for hearing me out. Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I want to talk, there's a couple of things I want to talk about, but the first one is the zoning ordinance amendment that's on tonight, the DFY 26001, MBTA Final Compliance Ordinance. We've been told that we need more units per acre in the MBTA district to be in full compliance. We need 1401 units to, minimum, to be able to be compliant. Having the wording in the ordinance as at least 15 units without a cap, I feel is not adequate. It needs a cap. It's been suggested to have the cap as 18. This will allow up to the 1401 units that the state is looking for, for us to be compliant. If we absolutely have to have this ordinance to begin with, I do feel it should be no more than 18 units, at least 15 to 18, but I would suggest, do we have to put at least? Can we just say up to 18? That would cover it all. Why do we have to say at least? This needs to be just for the MBTA district, and I'm reading it, and I think that's what it is for, but some of the wording and the stuff that's out there is a little confusing. I just obviously want to make sure that this is not for the whole town, and I'm sure it's not, but I just want to double check. If it is worded that way, we need to fix it. Also, it's been said that we only need 1401 on paper, doesn't mean we have to build it, but I'm wondering if the state is gonna say at some point, why aren't you building that many? But if you have it on paper, nothing's stopping anybody from going to the 1401, so you can't look at it as a possible. But, and just, it's just like adding, allowing five stories in a CBD, well, not everybody's gonna build five stories, but if it's there, what, we don't have any recourse to stop somebody if they want five stories, so it's kind of ridiculous. We need to be compliant to get possible grants, the word is possible, but at what price to the town? And the CEDD said that, at the last CED meeting, that we no longer could get the catalyst fund, so I'm not sure on grant, which would help with the infrastructure in that MBTA district area to allow for further development. It's kind of like, you need the infrastructure for the development, and this is to pay for that development, but it's not for the whole town. People got to realize that that was not gonna be for the whole town. And so it's not really helping. If you're adding more houses, you're gonna still need more infrastructure. And I want to know what the long-term effects this will be on our town. What are the benefits? Can somebody please answer that? What's the long-term effects? And what are the benefits, besides the grants that we might or may not get? The governor doesn't live here, she doesn't know our, didn't even know our infrastructure of our water blight. More communication to the governor needs to be done. We have three state properties, BSU, prisons, and MBTA, and now, you know, how much more are we supposed to have to comply? Towns are not cookie cutters. Every situation can be different. To apply this zoning to our town doesn't mean we, every town can do it, because you're set up different, and the state doesn't care, I guess. The state should be made to aut-
Oops, sorry. We're at three minutes.
Can I just finish one more?
Sure.
The state should be made to automatically improve infrastructure, water, and roads, and if they're requiring this, they need to do it before it's done. And I do believe the water impact statement need to be able to, for the Planning Board to be able to use that to deny a project or put a project on hold, and we need to have a, so I just feel that this ordinance needs to be voted no, scratch it, and start again. There's too many copies of it. It's confusing. Let's do, scratch it, and start again. That's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, residents in attendance, good evening. MJ Spagon, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. I am speaking in my capacity this evening as Chairwoman of the Finance Committee. I wanted to actually bring to your attention that recently, after having the two newest members appointed and sworn in, I was informed recently that one of our existing members has since left the committee. We are now in need of a ninth member. At this moment, I would like to take some time to just describe the committee. We are the Financial Committee, per the charter, although we call ourselves the Finance Committee. We are a board of nine members. I service the chairwoman. I have a vice chair, Dr. Derek Bennett, and we meet every second and fourth Monday of the month at 7:00 p.m. We currently meet remotely via Zoom. We're at least still doing that until the restrictions from the Acts of 2022, the extension expires, but other than that, those are the times of the month when we will meet. We typically meet for at least a minimum of four hours every month, so I'm looking for at least someone that can have a commitment of at least four hours at bare minimum, maybe a little bit longer as we work through the annual budget processes. The terms of office are typically for three years. This particular committee member was appointed by the town clerk, so what I'm looking for from the council is just to get the word out that there is an opening. If you are, you know, if you have the knowledge of a resident who wishes to serve on the committee, please send them to Town Clerk Tina Larson as soon as possible. I would like to have a full nine-member count, simply because, one, we do need nine members, because we are constitutionally required by the charter, but also because oftentimes we have had issues in the past, as you are aware, of meeting a quorum, just even meeting remotely. So if you do know of someone, please encourage them. Residents in attendance, if you have a friend or a family member, or if you yourselves wish to join, I would welcome anybody to apply. That being said, it is something that is vitally important. If you don't have a background in municipal finance, that's fine. You're able to get quickly up to speed, you can always ask me questions or any of the town officials' questions. But I think the biggest important thing for this will be a passion to serve the town, and to be able to serve fully in the role of a Finance Committee member for the amount of time that their term would be for. I believe it expires in another year, so at the end of the term, they would be up for another three-year term. So with that, Mr. President, I hope that you can get the word out. If all the members of the council can share that with your constituents, please do so. I would really love to have a full count for more than just today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Thomas, 50 Aberdeen Lane. I also serve as Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. There's an item coming before you guys tonight of CPC-approved project at the middle school, and I just wanted to let you know that this project has the full support of the Park and Rec Commission, as well as Bridgewater Youth Football Organization and Bridgewater Youth Lacrosse Organization. There's engineering work that's underway, so we'll have, you know, hopefully in a couple months here, the exact scope of the work. It's nothing major. In the grand scheme of things, you know, we're taking the land that's there and leveling it off, adding irrigation. Depending on how the costs come through, we'd like to add lighting, if not, at very least, put some conduit under the ground for future lighting, possibly resurfacing the tennis courts that are over there while removing an ancient tennis court that should have been removed years ago. But it's a project that's not overly complicated. We've worked extremely well with CPC, the other organizations involved, and everybody on our side of things is fully in support of this. So as this rolls along through now, I know it goes to, after tonight, it'll go to Budget and Finance- and Finance, and then back to you guys, but if there's any questions, you know, you can feel free to reach out to myself directly, and we can have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you. There'll also be another comment period at the end of the meeting. We do not have any appointments tonight, so we will now move on to hearings. First up, we have Petition P. 2026-003, petition for National Grid for pole and wire locations. This is the, the one for Center Street. This hearing was advertised in the 102125 Enterprise. The time is now 7:27, and I will open the public hearing, and we have our representative from National Grid here, and if you'd like to speak, sir, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jared from National Grid at 100 East Ashland Street in Brockton. For the Center Street petition, we're looking to get rid of a stub pole for a customer, so we have to reconfigure some of the primary to make it work. Basically this one.
All right. So now we'll ask for, are there any general questions from the public? So if, I know we do have at least one person here, so if you want to grab a seat and then have him come up and speak. So this is the general questions, and we have sessions for in favor than in opposition.
My name is Brian Quinn. I live at 130 Center Street. The pole's in my yard. I am for them moving the pole across the street at the corner of Aldrich and Center Street. There's a couple of concerns I have. There's a pole that's 110 feet off the curb line onto my property that's been there, and I've been trying to call everybody, starting back at Mar Bell, to move the pole off my property. They don't have an easement. There's no right of way, and nobody wanted to take ownership until they put one pole in at the corner. I finally figured out it was National Grid. So I made a phone call. They were supposed to get ahold of me and have a meeting so we could discuss what's going on, and nobody's ever called me back. You know, I feel like my voice isn't being heard at all. I want the pole off the property, but they owe me $140,000 in rent for the property for 23 years. So I don't know. I'll probably never see it, but if I don't pay my electric bill, they'll shut me off. So I'm not happy, but I'm happy that, you know, they're finally moving the pole. When they do take the other pole, I want to make sure that my trees are not harmed. They've destroyed my driveway already when they, we put another pole, a big steel girder, without my permission. I had no phone call telling, telling me they were coming. This happened in 2023, and I told them to get off my property, and they crushed the driveway. Who's going to fix that? You know, if they, if they break the road, they have to fix the road, but, you know, and I can't afford a lawyer to fight, you know, 16 lawyers at National Grid. So just, you know, a lot of things that happened that, you know, I'm not happy about, but this pole is a good thing because it'll get that wire. There's two wires that go from the pole on my property to the pole in the corner that's holding it up. And, you know, that's pretty much where I stand, so.
And just to confirm, you're at 130 Center Street?
130 Center Street.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any councilors have any, any comments or questions at the moment?
So just to clarify, so this pole is definitely being removed from 130 Center Street and being moved to the street? If I can get confirmation from National Grid?
Could I grab what pole number specifically?
3184, I believe there's one that's on his property.
Yeah, yep, that's the one that, that we're removing in the-
That's being removed?
Yes.
Okay. And then again, secondarily, and I know the rest of the council members received an email from another owner at 6 Aldrich Road, is it regarding Pole 3150? Is that a new pole being erected there in front of, or near 6 Aldrich Road on the corner of 137 Center Street?
Yeah, so Pole 3150 is essentially what we need to replace, it's what we need to reconfigure the system in order to remove that old pole from, I didn't catch your name, my apologies. Brian?
From 130 Center Street?
Brian's yard.
Okay. So that pole's replacing the pole that's in his yard. But now I have concern from this particular resident that the current, the proposed location may block her driveway or block their cars in and out. They're looking for some sort of setback of about five feet eastward from maybe where it's proposed. Are you aware of the particular complaint that this property owner has?
That hasn't been brought in front of me, but the proposed location should have, should have been staked out and, and wouldn't have been like painted right on the driveway. That's just, that's just not really how we operate, putting, you know, putting marks in, in front of people's driveways specifically unless there's some sort of permission from a conversation, or if there's, you know, plans for like a new development where that driveway is going to be removed in the future. So, so based off those comments, I, I believe that the pole is probably on the corner of one of the driveways, so we can, we can examine a setback for sure. I just, I'm just not exactly sure what they're referencing as it blocking the driveway, if that makes sense.
I'm not familiar with the location either. I just got the email earlier today, so I just wanted to bring it on up.
Yeah, I would, I would be, so I didn't actually perform this, this job. I'm, I'm here for the hearing for it, but I would be very, very surprised to see that the proposed location was actually like in their driveway. It's probably, it's probably off to the left or the right of it.
Okay. Again, I guess I'm sure we can forward the information from the resident to you, and then maybe there's a way to contact them and-
Of course.
Get some clarification on their issue. Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, we did get a little out of order, so at this time, I'll ask if anybody from the public would like to speak in favor? And then if anybody would like to speak opposed can come up.
Just later on, 6 Aldrich Road, she's here.
Oh, did you like to, would you like to come up and speak? We have your email, so that would suffice if you don't want to.
Yeah. They call them, mark on the, the wallway, they're, they're very close to my driveway. If they can move in back the couple feet, it's, it's good, you know? My car not hit the pipe, the, the pole, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the concern. I think it's either very close to the corner of her driveway and looking for, I don't know, five feet of relief away from the driveway if it's possible, more across from the pole 31 across the street. But again, it's, just wanted to make you aware of that.
A few feet, you know, they not hit that, you know?
Okay. To, to like the left or further into the property off the road?
Same, this left.
To the left? Okay.
You draw on the map, too.
Moving back to the-
I'd have, I'd have to see the exact angles. It's, it's, it's hard for a system to be super exact looking at, looking at the map like this.
Correct.
And there is a lot of tension on, on the poles with, with the different angles of the wires. It's, it, it's a lot more complex than you think it would be with the different equipment pulling on it. So I'd, I'd have to see the exact location, but if it is, if it is left or right, could you tell me where your driveway is? Is it on this road? So this is, so this is Aldrich right here?
Yes, okay.
So is your driveway like here?
Yes, here, see here. Just move on back a couple feet here, you know?
I guess it's-
Move a couple, couple feet. They not hit that, you know?
Okay. It is, it is probably located, located as close as we tend to the road.
Yeah.
So we-
I'd give a recommendation. I, I would consider if we're going to navigate this, let's continue this to following council hearing. Allow National Grid to work with the resident, and we can double back and consider-
Yeah, I would agree. So let's, for formalities, make sure we close out the public hearing properly. So just to get your name and address again for the record, Ms. It was, was it Gray Sheehan?
Yeah, Gray Sheehan.
And that's 6 Aldrich Road. All right, thank you.
You'd want to continue it. You wouldn't want to close it.
Oh, I didn't, sorry, yeah, continue the hearing, yeah.
I'll make the motion to continue.
Can I ask, can I ask a question before we-
Yeah, so let's go through the proper procedure. So councilors have any questions, and then we could vote to continue the hearing. Questions from councilors?
I have a question for the town manager. Mr. Casanova Davis, does anyone look at this before they bring it to us? I mean, should, if this been brought to us for the first time and no one else has looked at it, should we do like a sidewalk? I mean-
You do generally look at it. D P W will look at if there's a concern that bubbles up. For example, I wasn't in tune to the email that was sent to the council. It wasn't sent to me. I didn't know about it. So typically, if there's something like that, I would navigate that before the meeting. So yes.
So the other resident that brought up the concerns that the pole's on his drive and on his property, I mean, does he contact the D P W and ask them to come out and look at that, to verify it?
That would be a different matter. I think to you, that, that pole is on his personal, private property. I can't speak to what that decision was when that pole was erected, but that would be a different matter. That's a personal matter with National Grid. That would come to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions before we potentially vote to continue the hearing? Okay, seeing none, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
Motion to continue the hearing.
Motion made, and a second. Any discussion?
Just, I just, you know, when it does come back to us, I like to know that there's resolution for both parties when it comes back to us.
Great. Agreed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we will continue this one. Next up, Petition P. 2026-004, petition for National Grid for joint or identical pole locations, and this one's for Winter Street. This was advertised in the 102125 Enterprise. And by the way, the time that we voted to continue the hearing, that was 7:36. It is now 7:37, and I will open this public hearing, so, sir, from National Grid again.
So still Jared from 100 East Ashland, representing National Grid. This relocation due to a roadway improvement project.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public on this one?
Do you know how far dressing-
Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Pauline Grenier, 319 Winter Street. And there's like one pole there, and they're both almost on my property. Are they going to be moved, like how many feet back? It's hard to tell from this sketch.
It is, it is. If it's, if it's going to be relocated, it's probably, it's probably going to be relocated. I think, I think the Winter Street work is going on is basically like road refurbishment.
Yes, I know.
So it's going to be pushed back probably a foot off of the, of where the new road is.
Just one foot?
Roughly in that area. It'll be in the public right, in the public right of way still, but we, we give a little bit of clearance off the road.
That's not going to be moved drastically back?
No, 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 and it wouldn't be on your property.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Anyone from the public like to speak in favor? Anyone from the public like to speak in opposition? Oh, is it a general comment?
Yeah.
Okay, we could go back to that, that's fine. Yeah, you could come up, yeah.
Scott Smead from 325 Winter Street. So the order of, of what's happening with Winter Street is kind of confusing, or it's frustrating. So we're here to figure out, like you said, they'll be moved maybe a foot off the road. We don't know where the road is going to be at this point, so I don't know how to be in favor or not in favor for this, at this moment. You know, they're talking, you know, they're, they're moving their poles a foot off the road, but I'm next door to them, and my pole's about 25 feet in, and they're talking about moving the road possibly to that pole. So I don't know, are they losing 20 feet of their property, and then a pole's going to be a foot off of that road? So I guess at this point, I don't know how anyone here will know if they're in favor or not. Yeah, I, in favor of the moving of pole, but it could be 20 feet in. So I guess I, I don't know how to answer that at this point. And until that's written up, until we get that, it's, it's going to be a mess, and I don't know where we stand. Yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any information to the gentleman's concerns here?
So I don't, I don't have, you know, the full, the full CAC drawings from a proposed plan from the D P W or Mass D O T, civil, civil engineer, whoever, whoever drew up the finalized plans, who have all the final dimensions, the grading, the, like, all the whole nine yards. So it's tough to say, but these are proposed in the public right of way. So, so with the road widening, it's, it's still going to have the poles located before, before these properties. So with, with, out having, like I said, the full details in front of me, that's about the extent that I can speak to it right now, just because it's hard to, you know, not have every single file and be able to examine it further right, right in the moment with you guys, if that makes sense.
Okay.
But, like, like I said, it, it, it is the proposed hearing for remaining in the right of way. If, if it were to be moved, if it were to be, trying to be moved onto the customer's property, there would be, there would be a request for an easement.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll still have the general, we'll keep the general comment peered open, so if you would like to come back up, that's okay.
You're talking about an easement for poles that are in further, but mine's already 25 feet in or so, but they've never written an easement into my deed, or I don't know how you write it in, but it's, I don't have an easement. A few times, they had a problem with that, that pole, they've ripped up my yard trying to get at it. I, I don't know, like, is there a way to write that in easement in or anything like that? And is that going to be the same thing for everyone else?
So, so in order to, I don't have your exact lot line surveyed. I don't have eyes, eyes on all that. To the best of my knowledge, the poles we're referencing are in the public right of way with the information from my colleagues. What we're trying to do is relocate them to a separate spot in the public right of way as well. So it can be tricky knowing exactly where the right of way starts and where your property ends, but with, without having a full surveillance and everything, it's, it's, it's hard to know. That's, you, you can reach out for an inquiry.
Okay, I did 20 years ago, or 17 years ago, and same thing as this gentleman, they never got back to me. But they rip on me, my property, every time they fixed the pole. Got stuck twice, had to get a tow truck in there and yank them out, but no one's ever called back. So it's, you know, it's interesting, my, my pole's not on this, yet it's so far into my property that there's, there's no question about it. It's, it's on my land.
Do you know the number of poles?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't. Oh.
The number of poles on, is it the same property?
What I would recommend is, is we should exchange information, and I, I would entertain a continuance of this one as well. So let's just, just so that we go through the proper procedure here, I did ask if anybody wanted to speak in favor, but we'll do that again. Seeing none. Would anybody like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none. And then, councilors, do we have any, any questions before we entertain any, any motions here?
Just a point of order. When someone is at the podium, it would be very, very beneficial if those in the gallery were quiet, because we're trying our best to decipher what's being said so we can make adequate decisions on sometimes your behalf. So if we're not able to hear what's going on in the microphone, we can't do that. So I just wanted to make that point of order.
Thank you.
Thank you. To the gentleman from National Grid, so just looking on your map, the X, circle with the X is a location of the pole currently, and then the little half circle, is that where you're proposing to move it back to?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. And right now, that's currently located street, you know, pretty close to the street, like you said, in the, in the right of way?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, again, based on these particular poles, I don't think it has a lot to do with what's happening with the residence pole at 325 Winter Street. I think it's setting them back one to two feet, but I'm still in favor of continuing until things can be straightened out. But I think these pole locations are a little bit simpler situation than we had on the last one, so. than we had on the last one. So, I would definitely like to get clarification for the residents if possible.
Agreed. Mr. Lindy?
So, I'll make the motion to continue.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yep. To the gentleman who lives at 325, I'm your counselor, so please reach out to me. And if I can come by and have a conversation with you, that would be great.
Okay. All those in favor of continuing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The time now is 7:45, and we will continue that hearing. Okay. Next up, we'll now go to Town Manager's Report. We don't have any items on here, but do our councilors have any questions or requests of our town manager for a future town council meeting?
I have one. I throw you, Mr. President, to Mr. Casanova. I have a question. I wonder if you could help me find the agreement that we have with Taunton with the affordable housing on Hamlock and Heritage. We take care of the home, the houses, they take care of our residents, which I don't think have been properly done. So, I was wondering if, I can't find that agreement. So, I'd appreciate that.
Mr. Lindy? Can I add to that? I served on the Housing Authority prior to being on the council, and I know the Taunton Housing, I mean, the Bridgewater Housing Authority entered into an agreement with the Taunton Housing Authority. That board approved it. So, we probably have to get it from the Housing Authority.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President, to the Town Manager. I had a resident reach out after the last meeting, asking when the water ban would be lifted because of the good news that was there. So, if there's any update that we can provide residents on a timeline based on the wells refilling and things like that, that would be great.
Keeping on the same topic, I had a resident reach out mentioning that they had applied to the Water and Sewer Board or Commission, and we're told that that wasn't an active commission. So, could you clarify that for us for the next meeting, please?
Anything further?
With regard to Councilor Murphy's comment about the water commission, can we actively seek members to fill that commission, hopefully with either engineers or finance people? That's my request. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Lindy?
On a similar note, I believe we actually have a Board of Health, but we don't have an active Board of Health, so we might as well look into that at the same time.
Okay.
And the historical commission is looking for members, too.
And Councilor Brish?
I did ask in the last meeting for an update on the social media policy or communication policy for the town, and how that works for different areas and departments. So, maybe we can conclude that next meeting, please.
Anything further? Okay, thank you. Next up, we'll move on to discussions. First up, we have discussion on MBTA legislation. We do have this as a posted planning board meeting. This is not a joint meeting or a joint hearing, but we do have at least Mr. Driscoll here. And Mr. Driscoll, if you'd like to participate in the discussion, you could come up to the podium. And are there any other members of the planning board in attendance tonight?
No, we heard most of them that they couldn't attend tonight. We have a regular schedule.
Okay. All right. So, I'm just, we're having an open discussion here, and the reason for that is to, you know, have a discussion with Chair Driscoll, who's here, ask any questions of him that we may have. The potential intent later on is to move, send this back to the Planning Board and CED for further deliberation, because both of those, the committee and the board did vote the current language down. So, we could speak more to that later, but right now, this is kind of an open discussion for us. And Chair Driscoll, who is here, does anybody have any initial opening comments? Sony, did you have anything? Because this is your legislation.
I don't know what the proper method is when this should probably come up during legislation for action, the actual amendment, unless we're reading it to the public so that they can...
Yeah, we could discuss potential amendments now, and then we can't vote on it until we are at that item. But if we do have any potential amendments from you or anybody else as to how we could kind of potentially make this work for everybody, then we could have that discussion now.
Sure. My first question would be directed to you, Council President Loretta. Has anything changed from the conversation that we had on the amendments from that time before I introduce it? I just want to make sure we're giving accurate information.
No. Chair Driscoll and I had a conversation, and he sent over some language that seems to be acceptable for Section 3111, and that was recommended from him for something that the council should consider for tonight.
Okay, great. So, I will read that to everyone who is here, just so that people know what is being said. So, Section 3.1.1.1, it currently reads, number one, no dwelling shall be erected except on a lot fronting on a street, and there shall be not more than one principal residential building on any lot. We are proposing that that be changed to, one, no dwelling shall be erected except on a lot fronting on a street, and there shall be not more than one principal residential building on any lot. And then there's a footnote, footnote one, multiple principal buildings on one lot are permitted within the CBDS, CBDR, and the MBTA overlay districts. So, that's one of them. And the next one would be Section 9.9.4.2. It currently reads, regardless of other standards in the underlying zoning, the allowable residential density for the two MBTA COD districts is 15 units per acre, and that is being proposed to be changed to, regardless of other standards in the underlying zoning, the allowable residential density for the two MBTA COD districts is up to 18 units per acre in the MBTA partial CBDR sub-district, and up to 30 units per acre in the MBTA residential D district.
Thank you. And if I could ask Chair Driscoll a little bit of an explanation of that first section, because people who are unfamiliar with the language and the significance of the footnote that you added may not understand why we need to include that. So, would you mind just providing that explanation for everybody?
So, when we looked at 3.1.1.1, that applies to the whole town, not just the downtown district, which I think that was the intent, was just to apply it downtown. So, that's why we thought, you know, keep it, you want to keep one residential building on all lots townwide. But downtown, if we want multiple, that's why the footnote handles that, but leaves everything else alone. The one change I think you and I talked about was that it said residential, I think it said principal residential structures.
You wrote in your footnote, multiple principal buildings on one lot.
Yeah, the reason I said principal buildings, and this is something we can talk about in our joint hearing, is just, the way I looked at it is, if somebody wanted to do two mixed-use buildings on a lot, could they do that? So, by instead of saying residential, just saying principal buildings instead of principal residential buildings, they could do two mixed-use, they could do a mixed-use and a residential. So, that's why I thought if you just gave it more flexibility, so they could do two mixed-use buildings.
Makes sense.
And then the other thing, I think the planning board just wanted a cap, so we knew exactly, you know, instead of having an unlimited cap, you know, there's some predictability that could be built on a lot, so.
And any questions for Chair Driscoll on those?
Yeah, I have a question. What I'm looking at here says, principal residential buildings has been changed to principal residential use on any lot. Is that wrong?
That was the first amendment. This is an amendment to the amendment.
Oh.
So, what we considered was that amendment initially, and that's what we voted on to not adopt.
Okay.
So, I think you guys are considering a new amendment.
Okay, so we aren't seeing what was...
And we can change that in the CED meeting. Talking to, maybe we should loop in Mr. Solari and Mr. O'Brien, the town planner. I just, when I was talking to the Council Loretta, I just thought by saying, you know, more than one principal residential building, if a developer came in with two mixed-use buildings, is that still a residential building, or is that a mixed-use building? So, I thought by removing the residential piece and the footnote would address, would address the issue downtown.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so just to give some clarifications to all the councilors here. So, what's for us tonight on the legislative for action were the original edits that were proposed that was in front of the CED, as well as the planning board, for which both boards did not approve of. So, that was the change of use, the word of use in the language and the at least 15 units. So, both of those are obviously not being supported. These are edits now to go forward, different than these edits. So, just to give all the councilors clarification on that.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time or later, but does this allow for the ADUs that are allowed under state law?
I don't, this has nothing to do with ADUs.
I'm just asking that question. Okay, thank you.
And I'm not sure. I mean, that's more of a question for Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Ruley and Mr. Solari. I don't know if an ADU could go with a commercial, in a commercial zone, I'm not sure. I don't think so.
Mr. Driscoll, we're doing this to be compliance with MBTA?
Yeah. I mean, we just considered the ordinance. So, the ordinance came from planning.
Okay.
That was generated by, I believe, that April 2nd letter. So, as far as the compliance, I think Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Ruley might want to speak to that.
Okay. Do you know about the Waterford Village, the 128?
Yeah, I know it's a 40-yard, I know it's a 40-yard district, I know we have zoning for it. I think you can do up to 22 units per acre in certain zones.
Well, there's two, there's two sub-districts, the new development sub-district and the other substantial district. Do they have their own water facility treatment plant on this?
That's more of a, no, I don't believe so.
Because it says that they're allowed to on both properties. So, being MBTA compliant, 20% has to be within the half a mile, but the other 50 acres, or I think it's 50 acres, can be outside of that, because we can't comply with that, because the school's around. So, why can't we be complied with the other subdivision on the Waterford? It's already been split.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien, he worked on the compliance model. He worked on the model for us, because we, so when it came to the planning board, we, you know, we were told we needed to adopt these amendments so we can comply. We looked at 3.1.1, and we determined, like, hey, there's an issue here that could affect the rest of the town, so we don't think that's responsible to adopt that. Let's amend it, so it doesn't affect the rest of the town, but achieves what we need to achieve downtown. And then we looked at the second piece, where it was a density issue, and it said not less than 15 units per acre. And we said, hey, what if somebody wants to do a smaller project? What if somebody wants to do 50 units per acre, and they can make it work? So, we wanted some predictability. We said, if people want to do smaller projects, go ahead, but we wanted a maximum threshold. And that's why we said, you know, I think Mr. O'Brien changed the language before you. It says up to 18 units per acre in one zone, and up to 30 units per acre in the other zone.
And that establishes a cap.
And I think that gets, in talking to Mr. O'Brien, I think that gets us right around that 14.
So, I mean, you can actually put 30 units on an acre? How many floors would it be? How many stories?
I think we have, so I think when you do the MBTA zoning, you have to follow our flex development rules. I don't have it in front of me, but I think, I think it says you have to follow the CBDR flex development guidelines, which would be...
Four stories?
Four stories, I believe, yeah.
Okay.
But Mr. O'Brien is the one to talk to about compliance in Waterford Village, and he spent all that time on that.
Is Mr. O'Brien gonna answer questions tonight? I sure would.
Sure, we also have Bob here, but Shane O'Brien, Town Planner.
So, on the Waterford, we have two subdivisions?
Two sub-districts.
Sub-districts. So, one's already been built?
Well, the 40-yard district was established in, I believe, the mid-2000s. So, when that district was created, essentially, the 40-yard state law allows for municipalities to create smart growth districts, to allow for multifamily by rights in certain areas. So, we split ours in, you know, two districts. So, the town received $400,000, because the state was kind of initiating a lot of these smart growth districts. So, but since we established that district, there's been conversations with the previous property owner, Aimco, for a development over there, but nothing has really progressed other than those conversations. But since the 1970s, since those one- and two-bedroom apartments have been built over there, there's been really no action. So, that, a lot of the language within that 40-yard district is kind of anticipatory for potential development, but nothing really has been kind of occurring since that time.
And they say they privately own water, wastewater treatment?
So, I think what you're, I apologize, I think what you're referring to is, is part of that establishment of those districts, that there is an option when this process, if someone were to came in with a new development or something within substantially developed area, there is potential for the owner to establish as an accessory use, private wastewater facilities that they would manage. So, I think that that was written into there as part of that smart growth development opportunity, that they would be able to contain private wastewater onsite, rather than become dependent on our sewer and the capacity that we have.
So, the new development, it says that they can have stores, offices, and all different kinds of businesses on the first floor, correct?
That is correct. I think it's up to 200 feet, based on that ordinance, that area, because that area is, I think, adjacent to the Gateway, the East Gateway Business District. So, there is primary uses within that district that allow for commercial uses in the Waterford 40R.
All right. So, since MBTA says we don't have to build, but we have to be compliant, we could have that other new, that new development that's already approved, we could use that as MBTA, because it's already been approved for units?
Well, yeah. What you would want to incorporate, and you can consider as part of any, you know, ordinance to become compliant, is that 80% outside the train platform. So, Waterford Village, unfortunately, you know, is not, could not be included. That 20% has to be incorporated with that 80%. So, we could incorporate that into the compliant model, both the substantially developed and the potential, I think it's substantially developed area and the new development area within that compliance model, to, as Mr. Davis stated at the October council meeting, that would meet our goal for the 80%. But I would say that the amendment before us is really solely focusing on that kind of 20%, because that 30 units per acre is really kind of the catalyst to meet that 20% that the state has mandated for the town of Bridgewater.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying.
Hey, no problem.
I appreciate it.
I don't want to belabor the Waterford conversation too much, but I want to be clear, if we were to overlay the 40-yard district in Waterford with an MBTA overlay, would it make it easier, harder, or have no change for somebody to develop that area?
In terms of overlaying the current MBTA district onto Waterford, or?
Yeah, if you were to, if we were to include the 40-yard area as part of our compliance model.
So, we would just incorporate it as currently into the compliance model. So, there wouldn't be any changes to the Waterford Village overlay, there wouldn't be any changes to the current amendments before you. It would just be, I would type it into the compliance model, incorporate based on whatever the standards and numbers are within there for Waterford Village, to get, you know, us above that 80% number that we're looking to head over.
So, just to use numbers to make sure that I'm correct, so 80% of 1401...
About 1,100?
1,120 units.
Sure.
So, we would, in theory, be able to allocate 1,120 units in that area, and that would count for the, that would satisfy our 80%, the 1,121 unit.
Correct. So, that was assessed by Horsley and Winton at the October meeting, and we can assess it as well. That would meet us, have us be over.
And it wouldn't have any impact on somebody's ability to build over there? We're not going to open the door to something that normally, at the moment, isn't available?
No, because Waterford Village 40R has existed since, you know, like I said, the mid-2000s. So, the action there, there's only one property owner within that area, and then there's a certain threshold that they have to meet for their development criteria for that project. So, if you look at the ordinance, it requires a development plan review, which the planning board would be the special permit granting authority. And then there's a certain criteria that they would have to follow from a development standpoint to meet that. From a state standpoint, what they really care about is that you're permitting it by right. So, what it writes, what it shows into our current ordinance is that multifamily is by right, but it doesn't prevent the planning board or the town to establish certain guidelines to meet a site plan review criteria. So, I believe there's design standards, certain setback standards that they have to meet, and if someone comes in with a development project to express that, then the board has the ability to critique a project and get it to a point where it's satisfactory to the ordinance that's currently in place.
All right, thank you. That clarifies a lot. And last thing, and I'll have my other councilors see if they have any questions. So, seems like the 20% issue is the biggest issue, which lends us to this 30 units per acre. I know that it was presented at the presentation, you know, a few weeks ago, that in order to meet the compliance of that 200 and however many units, it's going to be 280 or something like that, it needs to be 30 units per acre in this, in these parcels. But are there any other parcels in that half-mile zone that we could identify that could lead to the compliance, so that we could lower the density in this area?
The issue that we have is that there's a lot of institutional land there. So, I think we provided, I think the map that was provided at the October presentation, and is available online, if anyone wants to check it out on our website, too, is that there's, the way that the map is described, is that there's a lot of wetland and institutional land that we just can't include as part of it. So, looking at that district, to have another district, it has to be contiguous of five acres. So, there's some little spotty parcels that you can't really include as part of it for spot zoning. And then even then to, you would have to include as part of this area, pretty much the single-family homes within, I think it's the residential C area over it's the residential C area over there, directly west of the platform to be as part of this too. And I just, based on our review of that, I don't think it was really feasible. I think the district that we came down with was pretty much looking at the Borough Ave and the Plymouth Ave area and looking like it probably could utilize an upgrade. And being that it's also adjacent to the CBD district, it was pretty much our, the best district that we could probably come up with that would be satisfactory to this compliance that the state has us have.
Okay. I took up enough time, so Counselor Allenberg.
I wanted to ask, why do we are not able, rather, we're not able to use institutional land? This is a state mandate. Why not assign the state land to this prospect? For example, Hale Street and?
Are we talking amendment or are we just talking?
Well, I'm being told by Mr. Rulie that we can't do that, but I think that.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, I would say Bob would be better suited to answer a state that state question. But you can.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
I think Mr. Wallens can confirm that, A, that land is not zoned for any type of residential use. We don't have the ability to tell the state that we're going to build residential property on your university campus.
They have disavowed that land and returned it back to the state.
Well, you're talking about Hale Street?
Yes.
And that, and Hale Street is being put out as an RFQ, RFP for residential development?
Yes.
It is outside of that. It is in part of our Form Based Code district. So, I mean, it, it is being considered, but it's not within that half-mile radius.
Okay, um, okay. Not within the half-mile radius. All right.
Anything about their counselors? Pass it over.
I just have a general question, I guess, back to Chair Dusko. One of our residents brought up this evening, potential legislation to empower you to make decisions on water usage. I think is really how it was termed. My understanding is you have that ability now. Am I incorrect with that?
You know, we've always, just like recent projects, we'll say in our decision letter, if you look at, at our last couple of decision letters, we'll put in there that you need to do a water impact form and we're not endorsing, or we're not approving water hookups. So we, we say that, you know, if somebody wants to build a house and put a well on it and a septic system, they have that right. So we, we don't, we don't approve hookups, but we'll say in our decision letter, I think, for example, some of the recent ones we did in the CBD zone, if you look at our decision letter, we say this is not endorsement of, of water sewer connections. Now, we don't have enough information on that. You need to meet with the water and sewer department and do a water impact form. So we approved the project, but if the water and sewer department doesn't approve the water hookups, then they can't move forward. They need to find another source.
So your planning board is not considering those things when looking at the projects?
Well.
Because of the language you're putting in the letter?
We, no, we do, I mean, we do look at them. For example, we have a special permit before us right now. We've asked for water information. We've asked for gallons per day. We've asked for a number of things. But at the end of the day, it's up to the water department to decide. I think, I think as Mr. Walsh had said, it's in the admin code, that it's up to the water department to approve and deny connections. I don't, unless I'm missing something and somebody can show me something different, I don't think it's up to the planning board to say what projects can and can't connect to the town water supply. And if that's something that we want to change, then, you know, we can change that. Our rules and regulations change. I don't believe, have any, we, our rules and regulations talk about sewer, like the sewer, and it talks about how to lay out water and where the water lines you go in this.
Point, point of order, I thought we were talking about this particular legislation. I think going into other projects and what the planning board's deciding or their process in determining other projects.
I guess I don't.
Is probably outside the realm of what we're talking about.
I don't know.
Well, just to tie it back to that, to maybe respond to that, isn't the decision of whether we're going to be compliant or actually having to hook up part of this MBTA ordinance?
No. What I'm looking at was a proposal that says no dwelling shall be erected except on a lot fronting on a street, and there shall be not more than one principal residential building on any lot. And then the other thing I'm looking at says regardless of other standards and, and the underlying zoning, the allowable residential density for the two MBTA COD districts is 15 units per acre. I don't see anything that relates to water. I don't see anything that relates to water hookup. I don't see anything that relates to a building moratorium. Those are the two things that I see. And I think they were proposed initially because there was a recommendation by the state that said, if you want to be compliant, then these are the things you have to address. And they're not even getting addressed really in the same way, at least from what I'm hearing, in the same way that the state's recommending. So query if the state's going to approve what you all approve. But all that being said, those are the two things that I see before the council right this moment.
But we're not discussing, we're in the discussion period right now.
Item J.
MBTA.
Right.
In general. That's what it's listed at, right? So why can't we discuss that right now?
So what is, what is the water, I guess I'm confused why the planning board's answering questions about other projects about water hookups?
Right now, we're in the discussion period of the.
Right. About MBTA legislation. So each board is an independent body. The determination and analysis of a member of the planning board is not within the purview of the council. Two separate boards, two separate bodies. If the council wants to propose legislation that relates to how the planning board operates, it has to be in compliance with mass general laws and with the charter. If it doesn't, then the planning board shouldn't be here answering any questions about anything other than what the planning board does and what their recommendation was as it relates to the specific legislation that is before you all. Asking questions of planning board members outside of that purview is not appropriate.
I, I would disagree. I think this is part of a general discussion and really shutting down discussion is not good.
I'm going to, Counselor, do you have a specific question regarding water and sewer approvals and tying it to the MBTA legislation?
I won't ask it. I mean, I guess I'll ask it offline.
Okay.
In a one-on-one thing.
I have a question.
Sure.
We have the 30 units per acre in the MBTA Residential D district. Now, they, they have put a cap of up to 18 units per acre in the CBD R sub-district. Why can we not have the 18 cap on all the different zoning districts?
Again, that 20% is within a half a mile of the MBTA asset. So that's, per sub-district you reference, is the only area within a half mile of the MBTA asset.
So that 20% has to be at 30 units per acre?
That's the only way.
We're talking high rises here.
No, we're not. Because I think if you remember what Mr. Davis said and what we've said continually, the existing underlying zoning still applies. So whether it says 30 acre, 30 units an acre or 18, you still have to meet the setback requirements. A portion of that land is lost because of driveways and roadways. You have to meet the height requirements. So you don't get unlimited height because it says you can do 30 units an acre. You still have to meet the parking requirements. So it's, you know, it's semantics. I mean, I've said before, I mean, there are many things wrong with the legislation. We're just trying to be in compliance with it. I don't think you would ever see 30 units an acre in that area, just given what the size of the existing lots are.
I would comment that the residents perhaps would like to see a cap for their satisfaction. You say it's probably not going to be 30 units an acre, but we have no guarantee of that unless some limitation is put in language.
But to be in compliance, that is the only option that we have.
I think one of the most important things to sort of reiterate here a little bit is there's a, there's a requirement of, I think, 14 01 units. Based on the amendment that we are providing, we meet that compliance model by 14 34 units. Now, in direct response to your question about query, could you have 18% at each level instead of having 18 and 30? You would fall below the minimal amount of units. So we would be out of compliance. So that's why. The staff has worked on, we've heard from the planning board, we've heard from residents in the town council, we want to be as close to that minimal amount of units there. So that's why we've put 18% and as the 18 and the 30. So it can't get any lower or we would be, we would not be compliant.
Although you did say there was a few number of units above the 1,400. So could we reduce it down to 24 units?
No.
Something like that nature?
24 would make you significantly lower than the 1,401. We're talking about, we're talking about 23 units difference here. This is, this is as close as we're going to get, I think.
Mr. Lindy.
Just a point of clarification through you, to Mr. Rulie. At one point, where is the boundary of, what is the boundary of the MBTA district start or end? I'm wondering about Spring and Plymouth. Is that within that district?
Spring Street is in the Form Based Code district.
Yep.
So it falls out of the MBTA. I mean, it's a half a mile from the physical location of the platform, which essentially gets us to the south side of Plymouth Street. Not the north side, the south side of Plymouth Street.
Okay. The reason I was asking is there, at one point was a proposed project, Spring and Plymouth.
In the rear.
I sat in on a meeting. Is that?
We haven't heard any more about that.
Okay.
But that would be within the Form Based Code area.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could ask Mr. Rulie, and also make a quick statement, that I think this is one of the biggest pain in the butt legislations that I've had to work on in my three years, and I'm sure you have your feelings as well, too. I think the reality of being in compliance and having to build actual units is what gets a lot of people tripped up, right? And a lot of people, citizens, residents have said, if you allow it, it will happen, kind of, right? And I, I don't blame them for that mentality. But the question is just being in compliance with it, right? So I'll ask you, what has the town done or what can the town do to protect our town if we are in compliance that doesn't force us to have to build these units?
Yep. So I, I think the biggest issue, and we've heard it many times at this meeting and other meetings, is water and sewer, both quality and capacity. And we don't disagree with that. We're 100% supportive of that. That is a position we've articulated to the executive office of housing and liberal communities and to the governor's office. In meetings that the town manager has established between my office and DPW, we're in lockstep that any new development needs to do a water impact study. And if that gets third-party reviewed, it does. There is no negotiation about that. If we don't have water to deliver to your project and still serve the other residents, we're not, it's not, a project won't be approved. Now, the one thing I do want to add, and I spoke about this at the subcommittee meeting last week, our water connection charges, which are very high, were calculated to take into consideration what impact those projects would have on our existing system. So that's embedded in there. So again, if you're looking at something like the Perkins project, I think the connection charges are almost $700,000. The ACE hardware on Bedford Street was $300,000. So that is being taken into consideration, the impact on the existing system. But at the same time, if we do not have the capacity and it becomes a public safety and a public health issue, no one is going to say we should still build that. It won't, it's not, and the, and the state understands that. And that's why they are working with us on looking at alternatives.
Just to, if I could.
Yeah.
So just to ask a follow-up on that, if we are not in compliance with MBTA legislation and we are not given opportunity to apply for grants, how do we upgrade our infrastructure?
I'll, I'll take that one a little bit. So the, the, the cost of this, these projects, this water infrastructure projects would be borne by the residents. That's the reality of the situation. We need to address the water infrastructure projects. That's what we had that presentation on. If we don't have grants to offset those costs, it's the residents paying for it. I mean, that's the simple response to it.
So being in compliance allows us to apply for those grants, be awarded those grants, and doesn't require us to actually build if we're not capable of.
That's correct.
Correct.
I mean, as an example, we were denied two grants this, this cycle. And the feedback that we got was that with the actions in Washington and the lack of federal money, any state money for these types of projects were oversubscribed. When the state went through and did their evaluation, they looked at communities that were in full compliance and said, that's where we're going to go. It came up previously with respect to the Catalyst Fund. The Catalyst Fund said right from the beginning, this is only for infrastructure projects for those communities that are fully compliant as of that date. So that's why we weren't even eligible to apply for that. Being partial compliance, we could apply for the one-stops, but we were denied because we're kind of in this holding pattern.
I want to emphasize that a little bit, too, for the community and for the council, is more communities, the writing has been on the wall, they've been very clear, we included in the packet, how they're utilizing compliance as a mechanism to fund these grants. More communities are compliant. So even though we did have a competitive grant application, the town heard, we've been oversubscribed, so we are working with communities that are compliant, not conditionally compliant, which is what Bridgewater is. We are working with compliant communities. They're the ones getting the money. So that's why our grants weren't approved.
And that, and just if I could, that program has a start date and a submission date. That next start date will be in the spring of 2026. There are other funding mechanisms that are out there that are on a rolling basis that we would be able to still apply for. We have communicated this ad nauseam. 106 Hale Street is not going to happen unless we get some assistance on water and sewer. I mean, that's, that, the state knows that to those people that are concerned it's state property. That, that message has been communicated loud and clear.
I think just to tie my comments up and then I'll pass it to my other counselors. Thank you for answering the questions. I guess for me, I will vote to approve, I would vote to approve this later this evening because I think being in compliance and our town having the opportunity to apply for grants that we can put towards our infrastructure without actually building these buildings, it seems like a logical choice to me. Knowing our town has mechanisms in place to ensure that the building isn't going to put further strain on our infrastructure. And so I think that's how I'm going to approach this. I've thought about it in depth. I think I've been critical of the grant questions and our town manager. But I do think by not being in compliance, we're losing on every, every end in that sense. And so I just wanted to be clear about my stance there. It wasn't really a question, but.
Welcome.
So I just wanted to thank you for going over the numbers for the Perkins project and the hookup fee for ACE hardware. What about Broad Street? I'm getting asked that question. The land is all cleared?
That's a fair question. They have not filed the water impact report yet or asked for it. So they're moving along as far as they're moving along. And they're going to get to a point where until they complete that water impact analysis or study, the building official is going to do what he normally does. Is everyone ready to sign off on this? And the water and sewer department will not be able to sign off on it and they won't be able to get a permit. The permits they have now don't require them to be hooked up. But once they want to start going vertical, they're going to have to complete that.
Thank you. Ms. Kenny.
Yep. From U.S. President, Mr. Rulie. So I know that we have two numbers on here, 18 and 30. I believe from the consultant, we heard basically, reaching that 30 limit, the 30 per acre is probably not going to happen in that district. Is, is that accurate?
Yeah. And, and that's what I just said previously. When you take into consideration the roads that exist, that takes some of the acreage away. When we look at what the underlying zoning is in that area, in terms of setbacks and height and parking requirements, that will further reduce what the actual, but probably the biggest limiting factor is the size of those lots in that area. They're all very small to begin with. And most, there are some that are vacant or some that are underutilized, but most already have a structure on them.
Okay. And this may clarify something for myself at least. We already have the zoning. This is an amendment. So because of that, we're currently giving right-of-way to multifamilies at a cap of 15 per acre. Is that correct?
We haven't had any projects come forward outside of the CDBR. And those projects in the CDBR are under the Form Based Code. So there is, essentially, there's no cap on the Form- So there is, essentially, there's no cap on the Form Based Code. There are design guidelines, there are dimensional requirements that are in the code. There have been, one project actually that's been filed, that's the Broad Street project. Perkins Project was in advance of the zoning amendment. They did build to what we were hoping to have in the amendment. Hale Street, in the RFP RFQ, responders have been advised that what our existing zoning is, so there's no deviation from that.
Okay, but as of right now, in the, in the residential itself, there, there is?
We haven't seen any.
We haven't seen any, I'm not, I'm not asking necessarily if we've seen projects come in. I'm saying where we are right now due to those zoning changes, those multifamilies have right-of-way, regardless of whether or not we change this tonight or not.
Right, the zoning amendment that was adopted in April 2024 is in place.
Right, okay.
Any other questions in the discussion before we end discussion and move on?
I have just, I just have one from Mr. Ruly. So I want to be clear when the residents ask me about this. So Residential D is the only resident that will have 30 units. And I, from the map, I see that's around like Hale Street. There's a small section, that section around there?
That's the CDBD, I think, where it's 18 units an acre. The 30, the 30 units acre is everything south of Plymouth Street to the BSU campus.
And that's Residential D District?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure so when I answer questions. Thank you.
So when you get to this district, are you going to be engaging in taking of homes? Or how, how will you do this?
I'm not doing anything, nor is the town. We, we're not in the property development business. This is an initiative that, as I said in my staff report, that Governor Baker initiated, to encourage people to do development close to MBTA assets. So the town isn't doing takings, town isn't doing any development. All the town is doing is having a zoning ordinance that allows for, doesn't require, allows for a certain level of development.
One more question. Can the Perkins development be counted within the count of the MBTA?
No.
Why?
Because it's not within a half a mile radius of the existing platform.
Well, the existing platform, but I have heard talk that there is going to be moved to the center of town.
That was, our original intention was, we were hopeful that we would be able to relocate the platform. You know, unfortunately, the leadership in Congress for two years reduced the amount of an earmark. We had to study that. That's been put on hold. So we've, for at least the time being, to be in compliance, we're not even pursuing that anymore. We're dealing with the situation that we have in hand, which is where the existing platform is.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further on the discussion before we move on? Okay?
I'll just, I'm going to echo Councilor Murphy's comments. I, I think for the time being, it doesn't make sense to be one-footed on this. And currently, we're at 15. This basically changes it to 18, especially with limitations in the residential. So to make sure that town can get money and funding through grants that are available, especially with our current state and the town with money, I think that this is something that we need to do. And I'm also going to express that I absolutely can't stand the fact that the state forced this on not just us, but many towns in the, in the state. So, but in the, in, to get the, the grant money that we, we are in dire need of, and how limited this is, and how close this is to the original code anyways, I'm probably going to be in favor of it.
All right, so we'll end this discussion item. We'll move on to our next discussion, and then we'll move on to the rest of the items on our agenda. We have a, a budget discussion. Vice President McGrath asked to have this on the agenda. Kind of as a general budget discussion, but if you have any specific questions or commentary, we could kind of start off with you and then go from there.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I want to discuss what we heard from our fire chief twice now. They're understaffed by five firefighters. They've had 915 double calls, which means stations are on different calls. So I want to know what happens if one of the stations needs a backup. And we learned that overtime equals fatigue for our firefighters and other safety issues. So I'm not willing to be one of those towns that funds their fire department after a tragedy happens. And I figure there's other ways besides the override to do it. I don't want to put that pressure on the residents, and I don't think they're responsible for our, our budget. So I was wondering if the town uses the ambulance receipt reserve fund to fund the fire department? Mr. Casanova.
So the town, the town currently uses the ambulance receipt funds to fund a portion of the budget. I think it's about approximately 33% of the total fire department budget is used by ambulance receipts for the operating budget. We also utilize it for capital projects and different things like that. So if your question is, can we use that to fund additional firefighters or overtime? I would factor in a couple of things with that. One, we utilize that for our operating budget. You know, we would have to talk about a strategy of, are we hiring new firefighters? How long are we doing overtime? Because overtime has a, a, a larger cost than hiring more firefighters. But also, you know, there's a, one, this past year, for example, we had less ambulance receipts than we had in the previous years. The previous fiscal years, we had additional Medicaid reimbursements. And one factor that I know a lot of people are cognizant of, we got additional revenue in those buckets of funds because we had ARPA funds where we were flushed with getting more Medicaid reimbursements. We don't have ARPA funds any longer. We also passed at the federal level the quote-unquote "big, beautiful bill" that has changes on Medicaid and Medicare reimbursements. So those are things that may reduce our ambulance receipt revenue as well. So, you know, I think we have to factor those in into any decisions we make about funding that department, considering where we're at, considering our budget strains. So I, I think that sort of answers your question. There are funds there. We do utilize that for our operating budget and for capital.
Well, maybe we should use it for the fire department because the stabilization fund, 805, do we still have $8,412,000 and like $95,000 in it?
It's approximately that. I'll have Lori speak to exactly, but I know we've talked about it. I, I think the, so I, I see where this is going in the sense that, yes, we have $8 million in the, in our stabilization fund, or more than that, a little more than that. But what, the reason why we have that in there? So part of this process is the town is going, undergoing quite a significant projects that require debt. And when you go out for debt, you have to go through a bond rating process. And so with these bond rating agencies, when they look at this process, they look to see what your reserves or financial capability to pay back those debts. So they look at a host of things. They want to see strong reserves, because if you don't have strong reserves, then that factors in if you're a double A community, a triple A community, or a single A community. And so where, where Bridgewater is at the moment, we're on the threshold of being, you know, a, a lower-end double A community. What we are working with, we want to see if we can be a triple A rated community. And what, what's the benefit of that? The benefit is that, on that, is the cost on taxpayers. The higher you are rated as a community, the lower interest rate you usually can get. So those are all the factors that we figure in. And, and we also have to factor in, there are rainy days. It's considered a rainy day fund. You know, when we had the 2008 economic crisis, we had to utilize the stabilization fund. When we had COVID, we had to utilize the stabilization fund. So that's a reserve there for a reason. We, we have to be prudent about utilizing it and not tapping it.
I understand that, but the stabilization fund is used for emergency. And I can't think of a more emergency than our fire department and our residents being at risk. We have the unreserved fund, the, the free cash. We have the one-time unseen stabilization fund. So we do have some. So rather than waiting till something happens when we'll be forced to do it, I think we should do it now. And it's great that we can bring down interest rates and stuff, but it doesn't equal to being, our firefighters being safe and our residents. So I, I would like to write up an order to actually somehow that we fund our firefighters. We only have to worry about it being funded maybe for a year or two because the fire department is very diligent of doing grants. And I just think we need to support them. They've come twice, and it's, they're sounding the alarm, and we're ignoring it. And for interest rates, I don't think it's worth it. But that's my opinion.
It's not only interest rates. There's, there's, there's decision, and maybe we can have a, a larger discussion where we can run through how this looks as a budget process. But if you're hiring firefighters, let's scroll through the process. We've applied for the SAFER grant. That SAFER grant gets 70, covers 75% of the costs of, 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 of the, the cost for the additional firefighters. We have to come up with 25% of that cost. What does that 25% of the cost look for our budget? What's that impact? I would like to run through those numbers with you so you can see. And I think as part of the budget process, we can have that discussion so you can see transparently what those costs look like, where you might have to reduce, whether it's town operating, maybe reduce the school appropriation. There's a whole host of decisions that you have to factor into making that decision. And I think that's something that you do as part of a budget process.
I understand that, and I don't know when the, the grants were coming, but when you weigh of the school or lives, I mean, it's obvious which more important. So I think we have to look at that, too. And I understand you're in charge of the budgets, but I represent the residents.
I, I don't disagree, and I think you guys as a council can have a discussion, but you had an override process to have additional firefighters, and the town decided not to do that, right? So there's the financial professional thing to do, and I can run through those figures with you. We can talk about, you know, other opportunities to add to the bandwidth of our staff. But you did a process to get additional firefighters. And I think I would let that conversation happen at the council level.
Well, I mean, I appreciate that we did an override. And I don't like the idea that we're blaming our residents for our troubles because these residents are our taxpayers. They support our businesses. They volunteer on our committees, commissions, and boards. They donate to our town's causes. They attend town events. They can't afford the taxes. They let us know by voting. So I don't see why we're going to bring that up and put the budget, the firefighters' budget on, back on the override when they spoke clearly, and they do so much, these taxpayers do so much for our town. And they just don't have it. And I think if they did, they would willingly give, because they willingly give their time and their money for everything.
We've got a few hands up. So I'll start with Counselor Strickles.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to circle back and through you to Vice President McGrath, I wholeheartedly hear you. I was a huge proponent for making sure that both fire and police were properly staffed and funded, which is why I really made sure when I was looking at the numbers for the override, that both would be the case. I think if you fund the fire, you have to fund the police at the same time because it takes both. So finding out what that number is, we're already at $750,000 approximately for those firefighters. What would that number be for police? If we're pulling from a stabilization fund, you may say that it's for a year, but we cannot guarantee that it's for a year. I don't, and I don't know about any other councilors, but I, in good faith, do not feel comfortable and/or confident to hire someone only to lay them off in 365 days. So it needs to be a realistic and manageable number in order for us to see if it's even financially realistic overall. I don't believe in pulling from stabilization. This town has gotten in a lot of trouble doing that in the past when we had to pass the last override. I don't think we should go backwards. I think we need to either look at common sense ways to work with the money that we have, or residents are really going to have to come to grips with the fact that the big mounting problems that we have as a town, we have to face them together. And it's going to require all of us putting more funds into it, whether we are okay with it or not. We need to fund the town. So if we are the funders of the town and we see these things as priorities, whether it's the schools, whether it's police, whether it's fire, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's water, whether it's sewer, how many times have we heard that our water and sewer bills are going to come due whether we build another thing or not? I mean, we, we have to look at things in a realistic perspective that if we are pulling from police and fire in a stabilization fund type way, are we opening Pandora's box to then be pulling from other avenues to redo a road or make sure a well can get up and running? Are we, are we opening Pandora's box? So I think we just need to maybe think bigger and over a long-term period of time. We want, I think, I don't think any of us don't want to fund all of these things. We want our town to be safe, but we also have to do it in a realistic and smart way.
Couple their hands up. Mr. Lindy.
So I agree with both of you, but we can't have a tragedy in this town. There've been tragedies in other towns. We've heard the fire chief twice. I think we also have to do police. We should be embarrassed with what's happened with the schools, although we want to find out more information on that. I think this should be on every agenda prior to when the budget process starts. I'm glad you asked for it to be on this agenda. I think we should talk about it. Last time, we got started later on the budget. We had an interim Town Manager. We have all the things in place to do it early. We have, I won't call him a financial wizard again. I did that last meeting. But we've got to figure out how to pay for this. And it's not a pretty picture on how to figure out how to pay for it, okay? Residents voted down an override. Same percentage in both towns for the schools. And police and fire here. But we have to really start the process sooner rather than later. I know we have holidays coming up, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Tuesday night for me is a meeting night. So if we have to have an extra meeting or two just to work on it, we should do it.
Speaking of the schools, Mr. President, has there been any update or movement on that joint discussion we took with Rainham as opposed to addressing some of that budget things? I know that was, was a process to be worked out there. I didn't know if there was any advancement on that.
Yeah, we are, I want to try to stay within the scope of budget discussion. So, because this will come back to us in the form of an appropriation. We are waiting for the, the final, I want to say, applicants to go through that process. And then the school will come to us with a number, and then I hope to have that on our next meeting for consideration because we should get a quote from them so we could have a final number. Rainham has that on their, their warrant for their next town, town meeting. So I, I hope to have that on our next agenda. It also happened, I also hope to have on our next agenda a, a budget resolution that we're going to be working on as well. That process has already begun. We're starting it right now. And it's going to formally start with a budget resolution for our, our next meeting. So you have that commitment from me, and then we'll do all of our work in that, in the Budget and Finances Committee as well. And it's something that is going to be, you know, for the next however many months ahead of us, you know, six months or so. So it's something that's going to be a lot of work. We have a lot of difficult decisions, a lot of hard conversations to have. And it's good that we're having those conversations starting now. Anything further from the councilors?
Sure.
Sure. Well, to, to speak what's been spoken about so far. Definitely, it's not, it's never good practice to take one-time money and, and use it for operations. We did it this past year to help out the schools in a one-time situation. But that money that we did, that one-time money is going to come back around. We're going to need to find money to make up that difference. So it's not, it's not practical, as, as the Town Manager stated. We need to have a certain level in there for our, our bond rating. And that's a very important thing to have as a town. Our borrowing power needs to be as best as it can be to save the taxpayers' money. We're at, we're at a financial crossroads as a town. I mean, yes, we, we tried to put forward a, a responsible override last year, and it didn't go through. But it doesn't mean we still don't need to have the discussions of a potential override to fund these things. I personally made sure those four firefighters were in that override discussion last year. And unfortunately, it didn't get passed. We still need those four firefighters, but we can't take one-time money to pay for them because, as Ms. Strigle says, how do we come back the next year and pay for them? Or in two years, once that grant money is exhausted, we have to take on 100% of those four firefighters, which is going to cost you $600,000 to $700,000. The budget is that tight. We only have so many resources, or forget any money here in this town, and the majority of it does come from property taxes. The town as it is, and I mentioned this last year, for the size of this town is, we are $30 to $40 million behind most other towns of similar size and population. We are doing as much as we can with a small amount of pie that we do have. So at some point, you have to expand the pie. So we're going to have to have some serious talks about finding the funding that we need to pay for schools, to pay for fire, to pay for police, to pay for roads and infrastructure. And more likely, it's going to come from the pockets of the residents. Not an easy discussion to have, but it's going to eventually have to have that discussion. Or at some point in time, we're going to be shutting down things like we did 15 years ago. We had to shut down the library and become decertified. We had to shut down the senior center because we had to move monies from certain departments to cover schools, police, and fire. So we, I don't want to see us go down that road again.[1781.48] We have to have these discussions now. We have to plan for it and hopefully be as transparent as we can with the public to understand that there's no wiggle room here. You know, we can't do these extra things because we don't have the money to do it. So this is the serious conversations we have to have in the budget process going on. I'm glad, again, it was mentioned, that we're starting it now. But the truth and reality is, there's not enough money to pay for all these things that are coming up. The cost of doing business is going up faster than 2.5% can keep up with. I was just looking at a little summary that came from Massachusetts Municipal Association saying that every town in this Commonwealth is having municipal finance problems, and it says, "To sum up the issues, putting this all together, the true challenge for municipal finance becomes very clear. Number one, state aid in Massachusetts is less generous than the U.S. average. Number two, flexible state aid has fallen for all cities and towns. Number three, given the 2.5% cap on local tax increases, the best tool for suburban towns is often an expensive and temporary override. Number four, rural towns and gateway cities lack the local income and wealth to respond at all. And number five, while rising education aid has enabled substantial new investments across urban Massachusetts, it hasn't provided the same level of benefits to rural and suburban towns." And that describes Bridgewater to a T.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Anything further from councilors? Just a couple questions about the budget for our town manager. I don't think, I don't know if you have the numbers in front of you, but we talked about the dangers of using one-time funds, and we did that earlier this spring because our schools didn't need the funding. Where are we at currently in replenishing those stabilization funds that we used to fund that effort?
So we'll talk about that in the next council meeting. But just to go off of that as well, we use one-time sources of funds as well as staff reductions and other operational changes for the budget. But we also have to be cognizant, too, that we also made operational changes beyond using that reserve. We reduced the COLA amounts that we had for this year. So we actually used the reserve as a short-term, sort of, get the appropriation there. We also made other changes operationally. So it wasn't technically just all using reserves. We were making operational changes to minimize that, because if you just solely used reserves, you'd have a structural deficit that you're compounding off of. So it wasn't just use of reserve, it was other operational changes that we did as well. So I think that's important for people to understand that.
Yeah, it's very, very important. Do you know, again, putting you on the spot here, if there is any sort of deficit that was created by that, by that practice? I know that there's a lot of factors. You know, we did reduce the COLAs, we did make some changes operationally, we did use some stabilization. Do you know if any of that's carrying over?
Yeah, we'll follow it. I think, as I mentioned before, and I think, you know, I've heard from the council, the notion we need to start the budget process earlier. We've started the budget process. Lori and I, our team, we've been thinking about this weeks before these discussions. We're already thinking about that. We've talked with the superintendent. I've talked with the superintendent there. You know, I think at our next council meeting, there'll be a budget resolution of putting a guidepost for our next budget. We'll be looking at capital, we'll be looking at free cash appropriations. We're looking at all those things. We can give you that information at the next meeting.
All right, great.
But I think it's really important, and we acknowledge, there's lots of needs. Like I said, you went through an override process because there are a lot of needs that were identified in the community. There's a lot of challenges, and financially, we have to address those challenges. So it's through a budget process that we go through that. You know, we've got to be, we've got to look at it holistically and wholesome while making these decisions. So I really can't emphasize that enough.
Pardon me. May I just ask, what were the operational changes that you spoke of?
I gave a memo, when we did the post-supplemental appropriation, I gave a memo that outlined the positions that we adjusted. I'm not going to run through all of those right now, but those are outlined out there. I know the council knows that well. But in addition to that, some of the other operational changes that we did, there were collective bargaining agreements agreed to with some of our unions. We went and asked them to reduce their COLAs for this year and the following years. With some of our other collective bargaining units, we've reduced COLAs. I worked with our department heads to reduce contractual obligations for this year. We asked our non-union staff to reduce their COLAs for this year as well. So those are the operational changes that we've made this year.
Have any lawsuits been settled at all, do you know, that would change our financial situation?
Yeah, I'm not going to address that.
Anything further?
I have one more. One more question. So the land that Bob Collier just bought, the taxes will go up, and once he's connected, I think he said it's going to cost like $800,000. Can we use those to pay for like the fire department, or is that restricted?
That's Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
So interconnection charges and so forth like that, those are, go to Water Enterprise Funds. I think, just to go off that question a little bit, and we'll do this as a budget process. I really think it's important for people to understand the budget we go through this year. We'll have some workshops, we'll get in depth with it, so I'm not going to get too in-depth with it. But when you have a new project come online, that tends to roll into what we consider new growth. That new growth will not be factored into this year because that project won't be built out this year. That would be something for future budgets that you would consider.
So you mean that it won't affect our taxes?
Excuse me?
The new growth won't bring our taxes up, is that what you mean?
That's how new growth works. New growth gets rolled into your taxes.
Okay, so we won't get taxes this year on here, it'll be next year. All right, thank you.
And I won't even say next year. We have to understand when the project gets built out, so.
Anything further? Sure.
I have a general budget question. Maybe the town manager could give a quick update on, speaking of new growth, I think that's been a concern amongst a lot of residents, is new growth and what that puts on our infrastructure. Can you tell us if that's on par where it's been in previous years, or in general, where that kind of stands at this point in the fiscal year?
Typically, and I'll let Lori speak to this a little bit because she's been here a little bit longer than I. I think our new growth typically, we've used $900 to $1 million of new growth. I think we're going to, one of your orders later on here, we're going to talk about, you know, the residential factor. And once we go through that tax rate process, I think we'll outline what our new growth looks like. I would say where we're at now is probably not on par with what we've had previously, but I don't want to get into specifics just yet. There's a time and a process, and I'll wait till the tax rate process, setting process, talk about it. Fair.
When you say not on par, can you just clarify what that means?
It hasn't been as high as what we've typically used in the last couple of budgets.
Thank you.
Anything further, councilors? All right, so I'm looking forward to that discussion. We'll have a budget resolution forward at the next council meeting. We could dive into more of these questions. We come prepared with numbers. I'm interested to see where we ended up at the end of Q1, to see where we're at, not only for new growth, but just as a budget, you know, overall, where we're at with spending, where we're at with revenue, and really, really dive in. So thank you all for the discussion and looking forward to doing that a little more formally and more in-depth at our next meeting. Next up, we have committee reports. Do I have any reports from our committees? No? Okay.
We're going to get a report from CED on the MBTA.
Do we want to do a report now, Mr. Lindy, or do we want to do that during the piece of legislation?
Yes, during the legislation.
All right. Okay, and with that, we'll now move on to zoning ordinance amendment DFY 26-001, MBTA Final Compliance Ordinance for the Town of Bridgewater. And since Council Murphy brought that up, Mr. Lindy, do you want to start us off with comments and the results of your meeting?
Well, our committee met, and we agreed with the planning board, and we did not vote those amendments through as presented, but we have amendments to consider here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
It was a 5-0 vote by the planning board, and it was 3-0. Yeah.
Great. Those amendments were presented to us tonight. Does anybody want to make a motion to include those or any other discussion?
So moved.
We have a motion to include these amendments. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Great. Deb, do we need to read these into the record? I know that Sonia did that earlier during our discussion period.
Yes, you should.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Debbie, are we adding the one about changing the sponsor as well at this time?
Okay, so I'll start with that one. Given the fact that I'll be 34 weeks pregnant on Saturday, I feel it's very important for this legislation to have a sponsor that if I am not able to be at a meeting, the legislation can still go forward. So I asked Councilor Perry if he would take over the sponsorship. So that is going to be an additional amendment. It's a pretty basic one, just making sure that we can continue the business of council if I, for some reason, cannot be on a meeting to vote.
Can we do that first?
Yeah, can, to our town council, do we, can that be all one amendment or multiple amendments?
Do one at a time.
One at a time, okay. So amendment made to, are we adding, Dr. Perry, or changing it?
Changing it from myself to Councilor Perry.
Okay.
Just to streamline it.
So motion by Council Strickles, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on changing the sponsor legislation? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
All right, now back to the business that we talked about before. So the First Amendment is to Section 3.1.1.1. The current read is as follows. Number one, no dwelling shall be erected except on a lot fronting on a street, and there shall be not more than one principal residential building on any lot. We are proposing to amend that, too. Number one, no dwelling shall be erected except on a lot fronting on a street, and there shall be not more than one principal residential building on any lot. And that is going to also include a footnote. Number one, multiple principal buildings on one lot are permitted within the CBDS, CBDR, and the MBTA overlay districts.
Point of order.
Yep.
Could I just ask quickly if voting on this would change, send it back to the planning board?
Not at the moment. We're voting on the amendments, and then after the amendments are voted into, are voted on, then we could entertain a motion potentially to send this back.
That'll be after.
Yeah, that'd be after.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, are we going to do that one and then move on to the next one? Okay, so amendment made from Council Strickles, do you have a second?
Second.
And any discussion on the amendment proposed?
Just to clarify, this is the amendment that was voted '03?
This is a new amendment that Chair Driscoll and I collaborated on, along with Council Strickles.
Okay, so it's separate from what was heard there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
All right, and the final amendment is Section 9.9.4.2. It currently reads as follows. Regardless of other standards in the underlying zoning, the allowable residential density for the two MBTA COD districts is 15 units per acre. We propose to change that, too. Regardless of other standards in the underlying zoning, the allowable residential density for the two MBTA COD districts is up to 18 units per acre in the MBTA partial CBDR sub-district, and up to 30 units per acre in the MBTA residential D district.
Motion made by Council Strickles, do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion on this amendment?
I would just like to maybe put this amendment in abeyance until we hear from the planning board.
We may send it back to them after we put this amendment forward.
They need to have something to review.
Okay, however, if we do this, then they don't have anything to recommend.
We may, as a council, after this amendment may or may not pass, we may consider sending it to the planning board as amended for their consideration.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the amendment? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Mr. President, I'll go ahead and make that motion to send these updated amendments back to the CED and Planning Board as a joint hearing for reconsideration.
Second. And we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Next, we do not have any old business. We'll now move on to new business, Order OFY 26-030. FY 2026 Classification Tax Allocation Adoption of Residential Factor, and I believe this is introduced by our town manager, and I'll ask him for a little bit of info on this.
Just briefly, this is part of our process of sending our tax, our tax rate setting process. When we refer this to budget and finance, Shelley will obviously appear there and obviously give a presentation as part of that tax rate process to the council as well.
Great, thank you. So I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved, second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, Order OFY 26-031. Budget order for prior-year bill sewer fund. Again, this is introduced by our town manager.
We had an unpaid bill from the previous fiscal year. When you have an unpaid bill from the previous fiscal year, you do have to account for that as part of a order. So it was about $2,763. And I think it's coming from sewer.
And I'll entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, Order FY 26-032. Transfer order contractual payments. Again, our town manager.
These are part of contractual buyouts, whether it's retirements or contractual payments associated with various collective bargaining agreements. So some are for the water retain, as well as the sewer retain earnings, and one for the general fund.
Thank you. Again, looking for a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second motion, and a second, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, Order FY 26-033. Transfer order for CPC Engineering for Multifunctional Fields. Back over to our town manager to introduce this one.
This was, as you heard previously, a $25,000 proposal for, to do some surveying for various projects on fields.
Thank you. Also looking for a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and the Finance Committee.
I moved.
Motion, and we have a second. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yep.
Mr. Casanova, what is an undesignated fund? Where does that money come from?
So the CPC has several buckets of funds available to it, be open space, historic. I know it's not affordable housing anymore. They have, there's a certain designation, but it's housing. And then the undesignated fund just allows there to be a flexible use of those funds.
For any purpose that you want?
Not for any purpose. It has to be a purpose that falls within the guidelines, but yes.
Okay, I just wasn't sure because it wasn't one in the buckets. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor referring?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Yes.
I abstain.
Okay, motion carries.
You'll have to state a reason to the president, and the president has to make the determination on the abstaining.
As I was asked at the beginning of this session or at the beginning of my service, I abstain from anything for the CPC.
Yes.
Due to a conflict. Due to, yeah, okay.
Well, like, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
And then, Council Allember, you also abstained.
I just have a question here. I noticed that they make a comment about water, about developing their own well, and I think that we need further discussion on that.
So did you want to abstain or just vote no?
All right, I'll vote no.
Okay, but we're going to hash it out further in Budget and Finance and Finance and then bring this back to the council. And last up, we have ordinance DFY 26-007. Ordinance establishing the process fulfilling a vacant town councillor role. I'll ask Councilors Murphy and Kennedy to introduce this to us.
Uh, so, we've had some discussions as to, um, filling different roles for months. Um, this was something that Council Murphy and I, uh, worked on, uh, together to try to establish a way that wasn't strictly through Robert's Rules of Order to establish a process for voting someone, um, into a council seat should there be a vacancy at some point. So, if my fellow councils have read through it, I can kind of give you just the idea behind this. Um, there's multiple steps through this process. It allows everyone to vote on every candidate that they actually support, and then at the end of that, those votes, um, after a couple of rounds, uh, hopefully we agree enough on one person, um, and it's a productive pro instead of a negative process trying to vote against somebody. So typically, we would have eight counselors available to vote. You would still need a five, two, three threshold to pass anything anyways. Um, but what this process does is it narrows down through the, the, um, the rounds, and if there isn't a clear winner from the onset, um, it allows us as individual counselors to put support behind one candidate or another, um, hopefully getting to a positive result and putting someone on the council prior to having to send it to a townwide vote.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. Um, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to refer to rules and procedures for their consideration.
So moved.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, sure.
Thank you. Um, just since obviously now we're going to be potentially facing, uh, an appointment to the school committee, uh, should we take a look at this ordinance and, and expand it beyond just the town counselor, uh, review because we might have to go through a similar process for a school committee member?
I was just gonna suggest the same thing. He beat me to it, that I, I think we should. The school committee process is the remaining members of, I mean, all the counselors plus the three Bridgewater school committee members, correct?
Yes, as it's written in the, um, Regional School District Agreement, it, it very simply says, and this is not verbatim, but it says that the three remaining, um, members of the school committee and the town council shall appoint, and there is no process attached to it. We've developed our own process, which is basically just similar to what was already in our admin code, and we just rolled with that. We did only have 30 days to, um, to do that, so we, we did that as, as best we could and consulted with Attorney Rollins on, on that.
And if you're, if you're going to do it, uh, for the appointment of a vacant school committee position, I would do it as a completely separate ordinance. I wouldn't piggyback on this because this really is very particular to a section of the charter, and it's trying to fill in a gap
Yep.
that exists within the charter. So I would do it as a completely separate legislation and bring it through the legislative process.
Okay. So with that, I certainly would recommend, uh, council putting it together, and I'm not sure, again, what our timeframe is to, uh, to vote on a potential council member, but I know this may take a little bit of time, so I think something should be done as soon as possible.
Great.
I have a question.
Sure.
Well, not a question. I think you guys did an excellent job, really thorough. I understand it completely from the other one. I really appreciate that you put the public comment in so they can talk after the candidate's presentation, and the nomination process is so clear, so I, I really appreciate all the work you guys did.
Any further, uh, discussion?
I just concur.
Yeah, also, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, I just want to agree with Councilor Perry. I think that that would be something to change. Um, I think it's two separate parts, but in the, um, to expedite the process for here, moving forward on this, I think would be good, and then taking up that as a secondary, um, for future, um, school committee seats would be a great thing.
Mm-hmm.
Question on that, would we have to get the school, through you to the town council, would we have to get the school committee to agree with that process?
I, I'll have to look at the regional agreement. I don't know off the top of my head, but I would say likely not because I'm guessing this part of that process is strictly within your purview with the remaining members from the town that are on the school committee or whoever else it states. So, but I could, I can certainly take a look at that. Yep.
I would just say, based on what happened in my presidency last year, that it would fall on the president to come up with the procedure if this is not in place at, at that point in time.
Yeah, it's written so vaguely that that seems to be the, the process, so we could take it upon ourselves to, um, be clear about what that process may, may be. Hopefully this is successful and we could mirror that effort, um, for other appointments such as school committees, so.
And that process has been discussed with the school committee, the superintendent, their lawyer, so, so there is, it, this has been vetted. There is an actual process because there wasn't one, um, that Mr. President put into place, uh, and, and everyone's vetted it and everyone's kind of on board with it, so.
Yes, thank you for, uh, for mentioning that. Yes, uh, Attorney Rollins, myself, um, Ms. Larson, town clerk, members from the, the school side, superintendent, school board, all were involved in that process. It did, it did state that we had 30 days, so we did have to move very, very quickly on that considering meeting, meeting times and, um, and notices of meetings and things like that, so. Um, that being said, we do have a motion on the table to, um, refer to rules and procedures, so if we're all ready for a vote, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion, uh, motion carries. All right, we are now moving on to citizen comments. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
So I'm Pat Driscoll, 35 Stone Hill Lane, um, and I'm just speaking as a planning board member because I, the, the question Mr. Murphy asked earlier, we get a lot as planning board members, now how do you approve projects without water and sewer? So when a project comes into the town, Mr. O'Brien sends it out to all the departments, and we rely on water and sewer to tell us if there's water, if there's not water, and what should be changed. So we rely on the experts, whether it's, uh, public safety, whether it's DPW, whether it's traffic, to tell us, you know, if there is, if there's supply in water, if there's a safety issue with the fire truck, and we have the, we have the applicant change the design. For example, we just had Neighborhood Command, uh, that wanted a water and sewer connection, and we sent that to Water and Sewer. It comes in, Mr. O'Brien asks for the comment. They sent the comment back that we have water, but we don't have sewer. So at that point, we move forward with that, with that direction. We asked them to change the septic systems but tie into town wa, to tie into town water. So it's, so do we look at water as, as part of our approval process? We certainly do, but we rely on the, um, the experts in town, the consultants we hire, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have just a bunch of questions. The first one I'm gonna ask is, when a resident asks a question, I know you guys can't answer, when do the questions get answered? Um, I'm not, I've never really heard any answers to a lot of the questions from the people behind me. Um, as far as the water goes in our town, I look at it a little differently than what's talked about. I think we have multiple issues with water, and one of the questions is, do we have a water supply issue? If we do, how long have we had that issue? And is there an estimated cost for remediation for that issue? Do we have a water shortage issue? Same thing, how long have we had that? Do we have an estimated cost to repair that issue? Do we have water infrastructure issues? Same thing, how long have we had those issues? And do we have a remediation cost for that? One more, do we have a water contamination issue? How long have we had it? And do we have an estimated cost to remedy that problem? We've talked a lot about water and some of those issues. We haven't really talked about our water treatment slash sewer plant. I know we had a, um, upgrade that was supposed to be good for the next two years, but if we correct all our water issues somehow, is that gonna put an overload on our sewer, uh, treatment plant? Because now that's gonna have an influx with all the growth. So nobody really has talked about, um, a potential sewer treatment plant issue, and I think now would be the time, not wait till we have the issue and then scramble to try to fix it. As far as the, um, MBTA stuff goes, one of the questions I ha, a couple of the questions I have is, um, how much tax money does Bridgewater currently pay the MBTA for hosting a T-stop? I know we have, um, towns that have a T-stop have to pay a fee. I'm not sure, and I know it's from tax money, I'm not sure how much we spend on that. How much tax money has Bridgewater paid since the T-stop has been placed in Bridgewater? So from the time it opened till the current time. And when did Bridgewater start paying the MBTA for hosting a T-stop that happens to sit on state-owned land? I'm just curious about that. And I was asked to ask this question, I'm not too familiar with it. Um, I understand there was a $850,000 shortfall, and if so, why wasn't it mentioned tonight? And those are the questions I have, I know they can't be answered. Is there a process that I can find out when these questions will be answered? Like tomorrow, next week, next meeting? I don't care when, but I'd like to get the answers. Does anyone know?
I can't speak specifically to that, but, um, I know that our town manager does his best to address all those questions, and he typically has been very responsive. I don't know if you want to make any specific answers to that now?
No.
Okay. But you have my commitment to dig in on all these questions, this is their excellent questions.
I didn't expect them to be answered tonight, I don't want you to think.
Yeah. I, I would be able to guarantee a timeline, but we're gonna, I'm gonna, you have my commitment to dig into these and get them back to you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
James Wall, 60 Crescent Street. Uh, wanted to, first off, thank you. I think there was a lot of really great legislation that got passed today, especially the, um, you know, helping with, with the fields, um, and I think ultimately the, you know, the amendment was the right thing to do considering, you know, the rock and the hard place we're in, even if I might disagree with the, the state mandate. Um, I did want to flag though a couple, or just kind of reinforce a, a couple of, I think, kind of gotchas down the road where, you know, we heard from the, uh, from Mr. Davis that we have control over, you know, if we allow some of these projects, but I think there are a few Achilles' heels. Um, one remains the water. I, I really appreciate, actually, I, I want to change my position from earlier after hearing from Mr. Driscoll, that, you know, maybe it makes sense not to put that burden on other departments, but I do think we should codify it somewhere that if we don't have enough water, that we can't pass these things, because right now there's no, there's no writing anywhere that says that. It just says it's up to the discretion of the DPW. And I think it's just safer, it's kind of more protects us depending on who is in that position, and also if, if someone ever wanted to appeal it, it's good to have something in, in writing, right? Um, and then the second is, is the affordable housing numbers, uh, for, I, I believe it's 40B or 40C. I'm really grateful we were able to get those, but I hope we're getting them on some kind of, um, recurring basis just to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a place where someone's able to circumvent our local control because of that again. Um, did want to bring up, um, I know we talked a little bit before about the, the tax exemption process, that's, that's, or the, the residential tax exemption procedure that the state offers. Um, I know that, that may be considered as part of the, the budget process to, um, provide some relief for, for our homeowners who, who live in their homes and kind of pass some of that burden on to our, our larger landlords. Um, I hope that'll be explored. Um, and then finally, I, I did also just want to mention, um, you know, we mentioned one of the consulting agencies that worked with us to develop the MBTA zoning, Horsley Witton, I believe it was called. Uh, the gentleman from that organization who, who spoke the other, the other month, he published an opinion piece in the Worcester Telegram on, on, uh, January 19th of this year, in which he talked about his experience with the town. And if you haven't read it, I, I would recommend you do before we, we consider maybe contracting with this firm again. Uh, there was a way that he described working with the townspeople and, and accusing us of, quote, "not wanting to attract those people to town." And I found that quite hurtful as someone who was in those processes. I, I don't remember that kind of sentiment being voiced, and even if it was, I, I think it was a little bit unprofessional of a, of someone that we contracted with to then kind of speak of us that way, um, in the press. So I hope that will just be considered if that agency is coming for any contracts in the future. Thank you.
Could I ask one question? Could I ask you where you, where you saw that published?
Uh, Worcester Telegram on, uh, January 19th.
Councilor Graff, I can send you the link to that.
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Um, I'm still a little confused. I still feel like maybe this ordinance needs to be rewritten only because there's amendments on the amendments on the amendments, but I guess we'll have to wait and see that. But, um, I still have the question, because I'm being, uh, Debbie Downer here, but down the road, we don't have to necessarily, we can be compliant, but we don't have to build the 1401 units, um, if it, for whatever reason, nobody wants to build or we can't build because of the infrastructure. But will the state at some point say, hey, where are those 1401 units? Is there, you know, I would like, I'm just thinking, is that something the state might end up going to a town and say, hey, where's the units that you said you were gonna build? Um, or is it, if it is just on paper, great. But the other thing I wanted to talk about was the, um, water impact study again. It just needs to be clearer as to who's looking at that. Sure, it needs to be done for when a developer wants to develop, they have to do this, but who's responsible to actually get it and review it? Planning board, we heard from Mr. Driscoll, which is great, um, so who gets it? What does it matter? Does it say, okay, that's the water impact study, and then it just gets shoved off? So it just needs to be clearer as to who gets it. We have it in place, it's a good thing to have, but who is responsible to actually review it, um, and, and act on it? And the other note I had, I've always thought of this because of some development, there's a massive tree cutting, and just, um, when the planning board gives something to the COMCOM for wetlands, is there a way of putting it in that the planning board can refer to the tree committee or something like that to see, make sure that things are being cut or to refer to some committee about the cuttings? I don't see why we couldn't do that. We do it for COMCOM wetland regulation, why can't we do it? We have a tree committee, why can't they refer to a tree committee for massive, you know, certain cuttings, not just one tree? So, um, that would be my suggestion for the night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Couple of points. Our good town manager has indicated that the Energy Committee and possibly the Community Preservation Committee would be invited to give you guys a presentation in the near future, and I encourage that, but I hear you're gonna be very busy with budget, uh, but I just wanted to offer that I am, as vice chair of the CPC and a chair of CPC, Gina Costoni, would be more than happy to meet with you one-on-one to go over what I think would clear up a lot of confusion about CPA. And the second thing is, the Energy Committee, we've done a lot of work in terms of not the costs, not, not the budget side, but the cost side of town, and we've done a lot of really good things in this town to reduce those costs, and I think this, uh, council needs to understand that. I have, I'm not gonna say what it is right now, because I want to run it by town manager, but there are some options out there for us to generate more revenue. So if anyone to reach, anybody wants to reach out to me, I'm more than happy to have you reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to council comments. I'll start to my left with Councilor Lindy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, good discussion, good meeting tonight. I know there was one, and I didn't want to ask the question out of turn during citizen comments, but I know there's a second energy aggregation public information session coming up, and through you to the town manager, do we have the date for that or Mr. Hunt? I'm just, I just want to put that out there for the residents. I couldn't go to the other one, I know it was recorded for Bridgewater TV, and it'll be on air, so if people can't get to it, it's senior center, and I want to go to that one, so, um, I'm gonna pass on additional comments. Other than help out winter, wonderful, and so we can decorate, uh, the town, and thank you to the folks at Town River Landing for all the different events they've done.
Thank you. And Councilor Hunt?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say a few things. I'm sure we've all been hearing about, uh, folks looking for food and finding food, and so I just wanted to say some of the places that are here in Bridgewater, I thought I'd give it to Debbie and see if we could put it on, uh, the town website. So Bridgewater State University has food security for students, um, which is the B- So Bridgewater State University has food security for students, which is the BSU food pantry located on the ground floor of the Rondelo Student Center, Student Union. The Bridgewater Public Library does food for fines, so if you went to donate food instead of paying your book fines, you can do that, and fines are reduced by 25 cents for each and every item you donate. Donations are gladly received even if you don't have any fines. Central Square Congregational Church has the food pantry. It's open every Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and Monday evenings from 6:00 to 7:30. I've got a phone number in here. If we put this online, I think it'd be better than if I say it and we're just listening to it. It's located at 71 Central Square, and donations are accepted Tuesday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it's best to call ahead. Krispy's Restaurant at 136 Broad Street. I heard on the radio the other day that they are doing food, so I have their phone number too. We'll put that online. St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry and Financial Assistance are available on the following dates, November 6th and November 20th, December 4th and 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and I have a phone number for them. For seniors, food is available out at the Bridgewater Senior Center located at 10 Wally Kruger Way. And another thing that I heard on the radio was that the donation of money can amount to much more than the donation of food. So if you have money to give, many of the organizations have capacity to get reduced prices on food that they're buying in bulk. So if you have money to give, give money. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Councilor Murphy?
Just wanted to say Happy Veterans Day to all veterans, and thank you to the veterans who've served and their families.
Oh, microphone.
I'm going to say it again. Just a thank you to all the veterans who've served the country and to their families, and I hope they have a Happy Veterans Day. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. I echo the same sentiments, and I'll certainly be joining the present and hopefully other councilors for the Veterans Day Parade in West Bridgewater. Hopefully, we'll have some good weather and a good, good day overall. It's always great to get together with the other surrounding communities for that event. And I'll just close, I just want to, you know, reiterate how important I feel that it is for us as a town and as a council in the coming weeks as we review just those updated edits that we did, that we need to really work to strive to be MBTA compliant as we're, you know, discussing, you know, budgets and income and monies that the town needs. We really can't turn a blind eye to the possibility of being able to collect whatever monies we can from a grant writing process. So we had the discussion already for the most part. I had a big old paragraph tree, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. But again, you know, the heavy work has already been done by the town and the staff. We're 99% there. You know, we had to postpone the deadline to the end of December, so I hope we can get this done by that point in time, and I really want to encourage us as a council to work hard to get this done by the deadline. Otherwise, again, you know, right now, we're playing the game that the state has for us right now. We've talked about it, you know, many times it's been called an unfunded mandate, and to some degree it is, but the funding comes from the actual grants. So in order to apply for those grants, we have to play ball with their rules. Again, this could change in the next governor's election. If we have a change of leadership, this could all go away. If it stays the same, then we're going to have to have the ducks in a row to continue to play this game. But I think we need to prepare as a town and have the ducks in a row in order to keep the funding lines open for as much as we can get them. So again, I hope this continues to go through as a, as efficient process as possible, and I encourage my fellow councilors to support the edits we just made and allow the town to be compliant by the 31st. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Strigels?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also thank the residents who continuously come out and to our planning board chair for taking the time to stay for our entire meeting and being a voice that was able to assist not only the council but our residents in combating some of the misconceptions and/or confusion about the MBTA legislation. I also want to say Happy Early Veterans Day as well to our brave men and women that serve our country. We're forever indebted to you and your families for your selflessness in preserving the greatest experiment that we've ever had in this country, which is America. So we're all indebted to you, and we should celebrate you every day and not just on Veterans Day. And finally, to echo some of the sentiments of Councilor Hunt, food insecurity is something that is deeply personal to me. I have been a champion for the cause No Kid Hungry for a very long time, and what is going on right now keeps me up at night. So if there's anyone, whether you're in my district or not, if you are having a problem and you need to personally talk about it or get resources provided, please contact me personally. You can contact me anonymously if you need to, but if you need a listening ear, I'm more than willing to take any phone call or email that you have because in the greatest country on earth, no one should go to bed hungry. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ellenberg?
Yes. Pardon me. I understand that the Historical Commission, which puts up the veteran banners around town, needs volunteers on November 15th, starting at 8:00 a.m., and they start at the Academy Building, and if any BSU students would happen to be seeing this, they would be useful too. We need young people that can get up on ladders. Also, I think I mentioned this already, the Historical Commission needs two more members to fill vacant positions. And then the last thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to consider whether the town would pass a building moratorium because of the water issues. What I'm interested about would be, a moratorium would be local control of the situation because we have no water or don't have adequate water, but we would still be in compliance if we file the legislation.
You can't have a moratorium and be compliant.
Do you know that for a fact? For a fact?
Yes.
I'll check that.
Councilor Kennedy?
Some of what I wanted to say was already said, so I also want to thank our veterans. I hope to see some people at the parade as well. I appreciate the citizens coming out and for those board members as well for speaking up and giving some of their thoughts. Thank you to my fellow councilors as always, and a shout out to my nine-year-old. Happy birthday, Elliot. Today's her birthday, so I'm here instead of talking to her in tonight, but she's a great kid, so thank you.
Thank you. And Vice President McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we're busy, but I would love to have the committees come and present, all the committees I'm very interested in, and I think we need to support them largely.
Thank you. And I'll echo some of the sentiments from my fellow councilors. Thank you to the members of the public for your input. Thank you to Chair Driscoll for staying here for our entire meeting. Again, just a reminder that we do have that Chapter 70 Local Contribution Study. I'll try to get a link out circulated to folks so that they could contribute this, the legislature asked DESI and DLS to do this, so please go ahead and support our schools, whether you could show up in Lakeville in person or make your comments online. And then again, looking forward to celebrating Veterans Day with any town councilors who could just show up to the parade on Tuesday. I look forward to doing that with you all. And we actually do have one last item on our agenda. Before we adjourn here, we do have executive session, so I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 4, to discuss deployment of security, personnel, or devices and strategies with respect thereto related to council meeting safety and to adjourn from executive session. We will need a roll call vote to do this.
Second.
And a second. So can we do a roll call vote?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Loretti?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.